So, good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the March 14th, 2023, meeting of the Calvert County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Kent if he would come forward and give us an invocation.
Let us pray. Dear Father in heaven, I thank you for the gift of government. I thank you for the gift of order that it creates in our world. And I just thank you for these men and women that you have appointed to this position to help us in this world. And I ask you, Lord, to just continue to guide them and grant them wisdom that they may enact and uphold laws and regulations that will help us to live our lives more fully in accord with your will, to be able to use all of our gifts, to develop our gifts, to help one another in this world, to develop that community that you so desire. Lord, I ask that you would guide us in our discussions today and in the days forward. And we ask all this in Jesus' most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you, Pastor Kent, and...
Yeah, it was quite the ordeal, but we're there.
For those of you that didn't read in the paper, I don't even know where I saw it. Now, someone showed up on a Saturday back in the fall, Monday.
It was actually on a Monday. A few facts that were not quite right, but that's okay. Yeah, somebody just showed up, went to the wrong church to remove the steeple from the church. And when our preschool, little lads preschool staff starts showing up in the morning, and there's a guy up on the roof with a big old saw and a sawzall, and he's dumping stuff, and we're like, wow, I didn't know they were doing that today. And neither did I. It's all good. It's all good. Our oldest parishioner, Mr. Al Flush, he was the guy that founded the church in his house. I called him up because I figured he'd be the most upset of anybody. And he said, "Well, pastor, it's only stuff." And I thought, that's a good way to go. But here we are. We're all good.
I'm glad you got a new steeple.
Thank you. You guys all have a great day and blessings on your work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, is there any corrections or additions to the agenda as presented?
Mr. President, make a motion to approve and adopt the agenda as submitted.
Check it. I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public safety announcements. We're going to continue this trend. We want to send our condolences out to the Douglas D. O. Bowen family who passed last week. Mr. Bowen was a lifelong resident of Calvert County and passed last week. And as I said, want to send our sympathies to his family. Also, on March 15th, in 1965, the Voting Rights Act was signed by President Lyndon B. Johnson. And what else do I have on my list today? St. Patrick's Day is coming up. Want to wish everybody a very happy St. Patrick's Day and celebrate safely.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Ireland has planned a full day of activities. Full day.
I'd like to add that D. O. Bowen was a tobacco farmer here in the county. He was on the Ducks Unlimited Board for years, was a lifetime member of Maryland Farm Bureau, the Calvert County Sportsman's Club, the Phoenix Society, the National Cryptologic Museum Foundation, the NRA, Calvert County Violent Fire and Rescue, and a member of Huntingtown United Methodist Church. So, he was a very active member of our community. He'll be missed.
And also, want to let everybody know, our public budget hearing is going to be on March 21st, 7:00 PM, right here in the courthouse. And we do have overflow set up if we have a crowd larger than this room can hold. Does anyone have anything else for public service? Seeing none. So, we are going to make a small adjustment in our agenda. The agenda that was published, we have a proclamation to recognize the retirement of Sheriff Mike Evans. But we have a whole room full of Girl Scouts, and we don't want to detain these young ladies any more than we have to. And I hear they brought gifts. So, using executive privilege, we're going to let the Girl Scouts come forward. And Commissioner Grasso?
Will the Girl Scouts come forward? I'm really excited today to be doing this proclamation. I was a Girl Scout. My daughter was a Girl Scout. My granddaughter is a Girl Scout. She... Is my mic off?
No, you're good.
It's good.
My name is Heather Howes, and I'm a troop leader for Troop 1104-2 and 1104-4.
She's shy.
Come on up.
Come on up.
Come on up. This is Gabby Howes, and she is a junior with Troop 1104-2. Okay. Come on up, Gabby.
Go on up. Don't be scared.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Kristy Ide, I'm a leader with 1102-8.
Alicia Aubrich, I'm a leader with 1106-6.
I'm good.
Thank you.
I'm Nora Handel, and I'm troop leader with 1105-6. This is Nora Handel, a Brownie from Troop 1105-6.
My name is Shelby Howes, and I'm in Troop 1104-4.
My name's Aubrey Ide, and I'm in Troop 1102-8.
I'm Lindsay Kowton, and I'm a troop leader of 11010.
I'm Juliana, and I'm in Troop 11010.
I'm Lynn, and I'm in Troop 11010.
I'm Jacinda, I'm in Troop 11010.
Casey Prohaska, I'm troop leader of Troop 11050. Piper Prohaska, 11050.
Philly Young, Troop 11009.
I'm Jan, I'm the guest of 11012.
I'm Nicolette of 1102.
I'm the troop leader, faculty leaders for Troop 11012.
I'm Adella, in Troop 11032.
I'm Emily Olberg, and I'm from Troop 11032.
I'm Molly Joseph, and I'm from Troop 11032.
I'm Erin, and I'm from 11059.
I'm Kayla, and I'm from 5796.
I'm Mariana, and I'm from Troop 6333.
My name is Lily, and I'm from 6334.
I'm Michelle, and I'm from Troop 5796.
I'm Shayanna, I'm from Troop 1131.
I'm Morgan.
And she's with Troop 11090. And I am Ashley Wilpers, and I'm with Troop 1131 and 1109.
I'm Suzy Savage. I'm with Association 11 and Service Unit 11-9, and I'm team troop leader.
Hi, I'm Allison Fields. I'm Service Unit Manager for Service Unit 11-7 in northern part of the county. I'm a troop leader for Team Troop 4678, and I am celebrating my 37th year as a Girl Scout this year.
Great.
Hi, I'm Marie Godden, and I'm a troop leader with 11012.
I'm Jeanne. I'm Service Unit Manager for 11-9, and we want to thank you, county commissioners, for all you've done for Girl Scouts. Is that it?
Well, I want to thank all of you troop leaders who guide these young ladies along the way, and they learn many life skills by being a Girl Scout and a Brownie. As I said before, I was a Girl Scout. My daughter was. My granddaughter is. I think she sells more cookies than anybody in the state. I buy more than I need because I want to support her, and then I hide them from myself. So, thank you all for being here. Let me read the proclamation. Okay. Whereas, March 12th, 2023 marks the 111th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the United States of America, founded in 1912 by Juliette Gordon Low in Savannah, Georgia. And whereas throughout its distinguished history, Girl Scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and character. And whereas there are approximately 646 active Girl Scouts in Calvert County... That's a lot of, lot of young ladies. Girls discover, connect, and take action to make their local communities and the world a better place. And whereas more than 3.2 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating 111 years of this American tradition with 59 million former Girl Scouts, living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that we recognize March 12th through the 18th, 2023, as Girl Scout Week, and congratulate all of the Girl Scouts in Calvert County on their achievements. Be it further proclaimed that by this action, we have faith in the ability of today's youth as they assume their roles in society, given under our hands and sealed this 14th day of March, 2023, signed by all five county commissioners. Congratulations.
Okay, so everybody look up here at the lens. Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. Awesome. And then, any parents want to come up here and grab some photos?
Thank you, ladies. The ladies.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, you're not. No, you're not.
Wow. Wow, isn't this something? Wow. Oh, yeah.
I am. Oh, thank you very much.
I gotta allocate that one, Adam.
Yeah, we gotta make sure everything's good there on that one.
Yes. So, just want to thank, along with Commissioner Grasso, want to thank all the scout leaders. And for any of you parents out there listening, have young children, you should get them involved in scouting, boys or girls. It's a wonderful organization. We'll set them on the right path. And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. There's nothing wrong with this one right here. This is in a good spot. You stay away. I've never had them raspberry ones before. I don't know. I saw that. Raspberry. You know it's good.
Did somebody bring milk?
How much money you got?
Ashley, I gotta get some milk.
They, they hold up well.
What are you doing? I might get hungry.
Because I buy so many for my granddaughter.
Good boy, buddy. Willis can stay right over there. Nothing wrong with that seat. We're gonna break them raspberry ones out.
So, again, we do want to thank the Girl Scouts and leaders for coming in today, and thank you for the cookies. We did make a donation. We are not going to take their cookies from them. So, the next item on the agenda is proclamation for retiring Sheriff Mike Evans. Commissioner Ireland?
Retired Sheriff Evans. Would you like to talk now, or would you like to wait until you receive proclamation? Okay. Come on up. I had the privilege of working for Mike for 25 years as a deputy. When he came on the job as a sheriff, I was a corporal, and he promoted me through the ranks to captain. I had a very successful career there, and thank you. I want to know what you did, for citizens of this county as well. I'm going to read the proclamation, see what Mike has to say, and I might have to say something after the fact. We'll see.
Rebuttal.
Whereas Edward M. Mike Evans, former sheriff of Calvert County, retired on December 19th, 2022, after serving Calvert County with 44 years of dedicated service. And whereas, on January 3rd, 1978, Mike began his admiral career in public safety as a Maryland State trooper, and was assigned to Prince Frederick Barrack U. in 1980. In 1995, Mike suffered a work-related injury, forcing him to retire on medical disability. From February 3rd, 1997, through November 25th, 2002, Mike served as a contract Calvert County Deputy Sheriff assigned to a circuit court. Mike was elected in November of 2002 and sworn in on November 26th as the 96th Sheriff of Calvert County, serving an unprecedented five terms, the longest sitting sheriff in county history. And whereas, Mike's dedicated service and contributions have been demonstrated with pride throughout his commendable career, under his leadership, the Calvert County Sheriff's Office was transformed into an exemplary law enforcement agency. Our deputies became better equipped with computers in their cars, license plate readers, drones, a mobile command vehicle, body cameras, and AEDs. Mike's commitment to keeping the community safe was demonstrated by placing deputies in the high schools, adding technology to locate senior community members throughout, through Project Lifesaver, and prioritizing safe roadways through a sustained, high-visibility presence and zero tolerance for speeding and impaired driving. We had a lot of fun with that. Mike opened the sheriff's office to the community by maintaining an explorers program to engage our youth, hosting an annual open house, and ensuring the sheriff's office was present for large and small community events. These are but a few of Mike's many accomplishments that have contributed to making Calvert County one of the safest counties in the state of Maryland. The Board of County Commissioners and the citizens of Calvert County are forever grateful for Mike's outstanding commitment to his profession and the community he served. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County, that congratulations are hereby extended to Mike Evans on his retirement after 44 years of dedicated and commendable public service. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County joins with his family and friends in extending him best wishes for a healthy and happy retirement, given under our hands and seal this 14th day of March, 2023.
Yeah, obviously, I wouldn't be the sheriff for 20 years if I didn't have a strong support group. And my number one fan, my wife Susan, was there from the very beginning. And I had a great campaign team with Judy, my campaign manager, husband Al, the webmaster, and the number one and strongest sign installer, my son Eric Evans in the back there. A lot of support along the way, and I'm blessed to be here today. And thank you, commissioners, for recognition. And the sheriff's office is in good hands now, and I'm sure they're going to continue to do good things for Calvert County. Thank you very much.
Susan, Eric, why don't you guys come on up here? Judy? Those pictures look funny with me not being on the end.
Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. Awesome. Congratulations.
Sheriff?
Sheriff, I'd like to add, you know, when I came on the board eight years ago, I had no idea how much we would work with the sheriff's office. I didn't know anything about it. I just don't know how to run one today. Don't want to know. And one thing I came out of there was, the responsibility that sits at that desk is enormous. And the sheriff's office was kind enough to bring me in and really explain to me the inner workings and everything that it touches. And it was a big eye-opener. Really, it's amazing what the men and women do of the sheriff's office on an everyday thing out there. I mean, it's just, you lock your keys in the car to saving someone's life. It really is. And I've had many conversations with you, Sheriff Evans, is, I don't know how you do it. I mean, it, the, the weight that it carries. And I won't bring up one incident, but I remember one incident that will stay with me forever, was a tragedy had happened, and, and you met me here that morning, and you said, Commissioner, I've done such and such, such and such. And I said, uh, did you call this place? He goes, I don't have to. Because... She didn't? Well, was it the wrong caller? And I remember your statement was, everyone's safety is coming first. And that was enormous. I mean, that was, it was a take-charge moment. It was something that was unprecedented. We had never seen before. And I was like, wow. It was really one of those wow moments in there. And I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. And just thank you for everything. You know, it's nice to say, hey, you're in the safest county in the state of Maryland. I'm sure that will continue. But it didn't happen by accident. So, so thank you, and especially your family, because, you know, it comes home with you every day. So, thank you very much. And yes, mine is a large, and does it breathe pretty freely? You know, summertime is coming.
They're ordering clothes over the...
Oh, geez.
You didn't pick up on that?
No, I ignore that.
But seriously, enjoy yourself. I know you went from wide open to stop, but you need to enjoy yourself. Yes, he is.
He is. It's true. Thank you. I, I, you know, I get that all the time. You know, thank you. Thank you.
Mike, I remember when you first were running for campaign, and you came to the Republican Women Leaders of Calvert, and we just watched you grow with each election and take charge. And, you know, I've always told you, I feel so safe in Calvert County, and I feel so blessed that I was able to call you with anything. And a funny story, we bid on a ride-along for our three oldest grandsons, and Mike came and picked them up at the house, and the boys were in the bay window, and they said, he's here. Oh, my gosh, he's got a gun. He's got a gun. So, they went with Mike for the day, and about a week later, a police officer knocked on my son's door. And Justin's like, God, what are the police doing here? And he said, Gabriel, get down here. And the police officer said, got a phone call from this house. And Justin looked at Gabriel, and he said, Gabriel, what did you do? He said, Sheriff Evans told me I could call him anytime, and I was just giving him a call. So, thank you for your service. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Mike, and enjoy retirement. Is the pickleball world ready for this? I expect to see you on TV one day competing. But we wish you all the best in your retirement. You know, you deserve it, so.
Susan, you're retired too now.
Yes, I am.
Oh, yeah. She beat him to the punch. She had to get ready. So, we hope that you both thoroughly enjoy your retirement. If you need anything, we're here. Pick up the phone.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So, that brings us to appointments. Deputy Minister Rosallo?
Good morning, commissioners. We have six rounds of appointments this morning, so I'll just try and move through these as quick as I can. First appointment is for the Economic Development Advisory Commission, and there's a request that the board adopt and reappoint Susan Cox, Lawrence Jaworski, and appoint Patricia Weaver to the EDACT.
Move to approve.
Check it. I have a motion and a second that we reappoint Susan Cox and Lawrence Jaworski, and that we appoint Patricia Weaver to the Economic Development Advisory Commission. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Your second round is for the Economic Development Authority. Staff is requesting that board reappoint Dawn Belinski to the Economic Development Authority with one vacancy remaining.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second that we reappoint Dawn Belinski to the Economic Development Authority. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, your third appointment is to the Social Services Advisory Board. Staff is requesting that the board appoint Sarah David. Three vacancies.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that we...
All right, your fourth appointment is for the Prince Frederick Town Center Architecture Review Committee. The board is being asked to appoint Bill Berry as the member within five miles of the town center. That will complete your appointments to that board.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second that we appoint Bill Berry to the Architectural Review Committee for Prince Frederick Town Center. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Your fifth appointment is for the Huntingtown Center Architecture Review Committee. The board is being asked to appoint Bill Berry as a member with architectural experience to the Huntingtown Architectural, I'm sorry, Huntingtown Center Architecture Review Committee. That will complete your appointments.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second that we appoint Bill Berry to the Architectural Review Committee for the Huntingtown...
Please check out the ERC webpage on the county internet for more information. Without further ado, the ERC would like to present this Team Excellence Award to the Sweetwater Road Accident Response Team. This amazing group of people is comprised of Alex Thompson, Terrence King, Keith Gross, and James Joachim. If you're here, could you please come up to the front?
Morning.
Morning, gentlemen.
So, on November 2nd, 2022, a major accident occurred at the intersection of southbound Route 4 and Sweetwater Road in Lusby, resulting in southbound Route 4 being shut down and both drivers being flown to shock trauma. Staff from solid waste and water and sewer were nearby and quickly responded to the accident. Solid waste staff Alex Thompson, a ground maintenance worker, and Terrence King, a compactor operator, utilized fire extinguishers from a county vehicle to extinguish the fire on one vehicle and assisted with extracting the drivers from both vehicles. Water and sewer staff Keith Gross, an operator trainee, and James Joachim, an operation superintendent, assisted in extracting the driver of the second vehicle. The Employee Recognition Committee is proud to recognize these employees for their quick-thinking, selfless acts of heroism, and just being wonderful human beings. And I do believe that there are some people who would like to speak in regard to this, so if you would like to, please come up at this time.
Hi, I'm Karen Evans, and I was actually in one of those cars that day I was in the accident, and I just wanted to thank you guys for everything that you did. And whoever scooped me out of my car like I was your wife or girlfriend, thank you very much. But thank you very much for everything.
She's got the-
She's got the-
It's a plats, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
So, next on the agenda is another award from the Employee Recognition Committee.
Congratulations, JT.
Hey, JT.
I wonder what you were doing here. I was scared for a minute.
He's keeping the guy straight.
Bye-bye.
That really is a great team.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners. Ladies and gentlemen, Amalia Pleat-Tam from Planning and Zoning here on behalf of Employee Recognition Committee with another great Team Excellence Award. Team Excellence Awards acknowledge employees who have excelled as a group, displayed cooperation and teamwork in pursuit of a common goal, and produced exemplary results. Today, the ERC is recognizing the Office on Aging Maryland Access Point Team. If you could call, come forward when I call your names. From the Office on Aging, Jenna Sissé, Jessica Long, Kristy Matchit, and Tanya Taylor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Part D open enrollment season is an extremely busy time for several members of the Office on Aging staff. Seniors can join, switch, or drop a prescription plan, but open enrollment is only an option from October to December. Assisting just one individual with only prescription drug coverage is a lengthy conversation that can take at least thirty minutes. This team assisted seven hundred and ninety-eight Calvert County seniors, not only with their prescription drug coverage, but also with numerous other needs. Their customer service was exemplary. These staff were present at work for over ninety-three percent of the possible hours they were scheduled to work during this open enrollment period. This dedicated team assisted our residents in obtaining vital services within an intimidating and confusing insurance system. Their individualized caring aid is a wonderful service and something we can all aspire to. The ERC is delighted to join the B O C C in recognizing these exceptional coworkers for this very successful collaborative effort. Thank you Commissioners for continuing to support the ERC and joining us to recognize Calvert County's government, Calvert County government's truly remarkable workforce. And if other people here would like to say a few words, please come forward.
Good morning Commissioners. Ed Sullivan, Division Chief of the Office on Aging. Thank you for recognizing our team. First of all, I want to thank our four team members up here, Kristy Matchit to my right, Tanya Taylor, the supervisor, Jessica Long, and Jenna Sissé. They did outstanding work from October through December. And in those three months, as Amelia mentioned, they worked ninety-four percent of the hours that were possible in those three months. I went into executive time, I wanted to see the attendance, it was exemplary. And when I was a kid, there was a great baseball player in Baltimore, the analogy may be a little bit of a stretch, but he was a shortstop. And he was a great shortstop, his name was Cal Ripken Jr. And hit home runs, great in the field, but he was recognized for showing up every day. Two thousand one hundred and thirty consecutive games, he showed up. And when I think of these women up front, I think of Cal Ripken. I know it's over, I know it's over three months, but they were there every day. And as mentioned, these appointments are thirty minutes in length at minimum, and they saw close to eight hundred seniors. I mean, they were faithful to the task. We, we've seen, it's been such a great morning seeing the Girl Scouts here, and then we saw the example of the light, what took place, the previous ERC award. Greatness can happen in one day, but greatness can happen over the course of three months by people being steadfast and faithful to the task at hand. That's what these women did, and we're so thankful and blessed to have them, Commissioners. Thank you so much for the recognition of these outstanding women, and thank you for the support of the Office on Aging. Without you, we couldn't do it. We appreciate your support, thank you so much.
Commissioners, Jennifer Moreland, Director of Community Resources. We have some wonderful cheerleaders among our staff, Ed is one of them, but also Tanya Taylor, who's sitting there before you. She is their leader, and she does a phenomenal job every day and can be relied upon to really get this team going and get them excited about the work that they do, and you see it in their energy, and you see it in their dedication. Just to give you some background, MAP, the MAP coordinator position is, is taxed very much right now, and that will continue to happen as we see the projected senior growth in the next thirty years, or I'm sorry, in the next twenty-five years to grow by thirty percent. So, these positions are so incredibly vital. Our seniors in our community rely on them for all sorts of benefit assistance programs, and just to help them with applications, to help them through the process of understanding what's out there. Because until you need something, you don't necessarily know about it, and that's the, the critical point that the MAP coordinators play for so many in our community. I also want to mention that we, we have appointments at all of our senior centers for MAP staff, so it's not just at Calvert-Pine Senior Center, but MAP coordinators go out to every one of our senior centers to meet face-to-face with seniors in our community. That makes a huge difference. They're also available on, at the Office on Aging via phone, and are very, very responsive. And so, this dynamic seller team that we have, there's nobody like them. They've only been here for three years. So, that's remarkable to me, that we have a new team, but they already are accomplishing so much. And Laura is joining us, she's our newest MAP coordinator, and is here to celebrate with them, Laura Hardisty. So, thank you Jenna, Jessica, Laura, Kristy, and Tanya for bringing your A game every day. It makes a huge difference for a lot of people in this community. Thank you.
So, let's get it together.
One, two, three, one more, one, two, three. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you for doing what you do.
Congratulations.
So, as a senior, I personally want to thank you ladies, because, you know, everything now is online, and as a senior, it can be a challenge sometimes, and so, I know that those eight hundred individuals greatly appreciated what you did for them and helped them navigate the system. So, thank you very much for what you did. So, that brings us to consent on the agenda. Today, we have six consent items. Item one, Department of Parks and Recreation Mount Hope Playground Budget Adjustment. Item two, Department of Community Resources FY 2024 Transportation Grant Application. Item three, Department of Public Works Budget Adjustment Request, Beefback Skid Wheelloader and Excavator. Item four, Department Planning Zoning Grant Application for Nine Total Water Monitoring. Item five, Office of Court, of the Court Administrator FY 23 Administrative Office of the Court Security Grant Memorandum of Understanding. Item six, Department of Public Safety Lease Agreement between Board of County Commissioners and New Singular Wireless P S C S O L C. Are there any objections to the items listed under consent?
No.
None.
Hearing none, those items will be adopted as presented. That brings us to new business, Department of Planning Zoning. Chris?
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Christopher Spurling, Planning and Zoning. I'm here today in regards to an application. Good morning. I'm here today in regards to the application for historic district designation, so background. Overlay districts are created to impose special regulations in addition to those of the underlying primary zoning for a given property or area. A historic district is one of four types of overlay districts in Calvert County. The other three are agricultural preservation districts, districts allowing the use of transferable development rights, and critical area districts. Calvert County Historic Districts, following the procedure used for any zoning change, require a joint public hearing. Discussion. Mr. Donald P. McDougall applied for historic district designation for the property to be known as the Vale House at 14280 South Solomon's Island Road, Solomon's, Maryland 20688. The Historic District Commission voted six-zero, with one member not voting, to recommend the designation of the Vale House Historic District at their meeting on March 8th, 2023. The HDC's decision was based upon finding the application met criteria fifty-seven of the county code historic districts, specifically fifty-seven dash eight A 1A, fifty-seven eight A 1D, fifty-seven eight A 2A, and fifty-seven eight A 2C. Fiscal impact, none. Conclusions. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners discuss the proposed historic district application and direct staff to move forward with a work session with the Planning Commission to begin the public adoption process. I can take any questions that you have.
So, I don't have a question, I have a comment. Danny Baker, would you like to say anything? This was, this was his, some of his family's house.
Not to call you out or anything.
His, what, great-grandfather, grandfather?
Great-grandfather.
And he and I talked briefly about it. You said a lot of lumber came from Hoopers Island?
Yeah, I'm Dan Baker, Safety Officer with the Calvert County Government. Philip T. Vale came from New York, came down Potomac River to run pound nets. And when he went down to Potomac River, he came up to Patuxent River, found Solomon's, and fell in love. He wanted to build a house there, they lived in the first house out on the front, next to the biological lab, now that the biological lab has the old house now. It used to be Commodore Barney, well, they used to live there first, and then they had the house big, built up in Abidale. All the wood came from Hoopers Island, and, and the original pictures we donated to the museum, it's just a big tomato field, as far as you can see is nothing but field, when they built the house. But, yeah, it goes back, my grandfather, when the manuals had it in the seventies, they had a walk-through open house, and he took me room to room on whose room this was, and when they got there, they had the first oil heat or gas heat, they had the first one in the county, they had the first running water in the house, and that was a big thing. And that's all, Richard Dodds gave me the cutouts, the clippings in the newspapers from the early nineteen hundreds when all that went on. But it's, I'm glad to see him put it in historic.
You said something about bling glass and a boiler too?
Yeah, when you go up in the spiral staircase going upstairs where the steeple is, they have, all the glass on the windows were bowed, it was bowed glass, and it was all hand-blown. And my grandfather would give me tidbits on this and that, and different things. But I'm, I'm glad to see him, see him preserve it.
All right. Thank you for that history.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the most extensive history we've gotten of a presentation since I've been here.
It's a beautiful home, beautiful.
It's one that everybody notices as soon as they come off of the floor.
Yes.
Definitely stands up.
Yes. Any questions?
Need a motion?
Yep. Just person make a motion that, oops, excuse me, that we work, we move forward with a work session with the Planning Commission to begin the public adoption process.
Second.
A motion a second that we move forward with a work session with the Planning Commission to begin the public process for consideration of the application. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That would actually be Katie's great-grandpa.
Yes. Who's not with us today because she's ill. I just can't imagine her ill.
Yeah, I can't either.
I mean, what does ill look like for her?
Yeah.
Because she's like, she's like a hundred and eighty miles an hour, so.
Would she go down a hundred and sixty?
Two little ones that are sick with them.
She's having a lot of fun.
Yeah. Would you give her our best?
Absolutely.
And tell her we miss her.
It's not the same.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So, next item on the agenda is Presentation, Department of Finance and Budget? An Audit Report.
Normally hear that audit.
Highlight of the meeting. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners.
I'm Sharon Strand, I'm the Director of Finance and Budget.
And I'm Chris Lehman, I'm the engagement partner over this year's financial statement audit.
So, I'll go ahead and read the memo. The subject is the Audit Results for Fiscal Year 2022. Now that the biological lab has the old house now. It used to be Commodore Barney. Well, they used to live there first, and then they had the house built up in Abidale. All the wood came from Hooper's Island, and in the original pictures we donated to the museum, it's just a big tomato field. As far as you can see, it's nothing but field when they built the house. But yeah, it goes back. My grandfather, when the manuals had it in the seventies, they had a walk-through, open house, and he took me room to room on whose room this was, and when they got there, they had the first oil heat or gas heat. They had the first one in the county. They had the first running water in the house, and that was a big thing. And that's all the, Richard Dodds gave me the cutouts, the clippings in the newspapers from the early nineteen hundreds when all that went on. But it's, I'm glad to see him put it in historic.
You said something about bling glass and a boiler too?
Yeah, when you go up in the spiral staircase going upstairs where the steeple is, they have, all the glass on the windows were bowed. It was bowed glass, and it was all hand-blown. And my grandfather gave me tidbits on this and that and different things. But I'm glad to see him preserve it.
All right. Thank you for that history.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the most extensive history we've gotten of a presentation since I've been here.
It's a beautiful home. Beautiful.
It's one that everybody notices as soon as they come off of the floor.
Definitely stands up.
Yes. Any questions?
Need a motion?
Yep.
Just person make a motion that, excuse me, that we work, we move forward with a work session with the planning commission to begin the public adoption process.
Second.
A motion in the second that we move forward with a work session with the planning commission to begin the public process for consideration of the application. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That would actually be Katie's great-grandfather.
Yes. Who's not with us today because she's ill. I just can't imagine her ill.
Yeah, I can't either.
I mean, what does ill look like for her?
Yeah.
Because she's like, she's like a hundred and eighty miles an hour, so.
Would she go down a hundred and sixty?
Two little ones that are sick with them.
Oh.
She's having a lot of fun.
Yeah. Would you give her our best?
Absolutely.
And tell her we miss her.
It's not the same.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So next item on the agenda is presentation, Department of Finance and Budget. An audit report.
Normally hear that audit.
Highlight of the meeting. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners.
I'm Sharon Strand. I'm the Director of Finance and Budget.
And I'm Chris Lehman. I'm the engagement partner over this year's financial statement audit.
So I'll go ahead and read the memo. The subject is the audit results for fiscal year 2022. Background, the annual comprehensive financial report, or ACFOR, prepared by the Department of Finance and Budget is available on the Finance and Budget landing page on the Calver County Government website for your review. The slide presentation prepared by SB and Company LLC, the county's auditors, included with this memo is intended as an outline of the planned presentation. As in prior years, the presentation is intended to be very high-level and accordingly will be brief. Discussion, the county's financial statements received an unmodified or clean opinion from the auditors. The general fund, the main operating fund of the county, ended fiscal year 2022 with a budgetary surplus of twenty-four point five million. The ending general fund balance was one hundred and thirty-one point eight million, of which thirty million is committed fund balance for the county's stabilization arrangement. This report has been submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, for their review and certificate program. This report proudly represents the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting awarded to the county for fiscal year 2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Sharon, I hate to stop you, just for folks at home, can you explain to them why that stabilization balance is so important?
So the stabilization is so important, A, for our bond rating. We set aside nine percent of our next year's budget to hold in reserve, and there's certain qualifications on how that money can be spent. So on top of the undesignated fund balance that we have, we have this thirty million sitting aside for all intents purposes, emergency situations.
Can you explain what the ramifications would be? And I hate to, it's important because of what we're getting to, we approach budget-wise, the demands that are coming, why it's so important not to touch that money, that what could the penalties ramifications be for that?
So again, for the bond rating, and that's three, each year when we sell bonds, we go before the bond raters, and they grade the county on its financial position. And when we get those bond ratings, it determines pretty much our interest rate on the bonds. Right now, the county has AAA bond rating, and it is in part in due to how much we keep on our stabilization arrangement and how much we reserve.
For like folks at home, like a credit score.
Correct.
So if you had a terrible credit score and you needed a home loan, how adverse that could be opposed to having a great credit score? And I'm sorry, just to.
No, thank you. So keeping that money in there allows for one of the categories that they grade us on to make sure that we're stable, to make sure that we continue with our conservative approach on adding to our fund balance and keeping that money there for emergency situations.
To me, act like it doesn't exist.
Exactly.
I mean, you really have to. You have to act like it just does not exist. It's, you know, because if you have to touch that, then all has failed.
Right. We try to use, so there's four designations of fund balance. So we try to use the other two lower fund balances first, before we even touch that. Again, we do not, when we pass our budget, we do not use, use the prior year fund balance as a budgetary for ongoing expenses. So we will.
Could mess with triple bond rating as well. My first two budgets, I believe we were bleeding about eight million a pop. And, you know, that's, and these were to cover reoccurring expenses.
Right.
So, you know, that well runs dry.
Yes.
And we didn't achieve that first triple till.
Like four or five years ago.
I want to say, was that in seventeen?
I'd have to go back and check the exact.
Sixteen or seventeen.
When we received the third one.
And we will not lose that. It is too crucial.
Correct. And that's what we are working towards. One of the major rating agency has changed their criteria on how they are rating not just local governments in Maryland, but throughout the nation. We are working with our advisors to make sure that we still meet those qualifications for AAA bond rating.
Without it, services will suffer. That's why it's so important, you know, people always hear us campaign season, talk about bond rating, bond rating, and it just seems like so boring, whatever. If you just imagine, if you, all of a sudden you woke up and you had a six-hundred credit score, what would that do to your finances at home? You know, if you were just going to make a major purchase, and with everything we do, we borrow money to do that. So I don't mean to kind of stop you there, but being a buildup, we're getting ready to for next Tuesday, there's going to be people saying, well, I heard you had thirty million dollars sitting there. I mean, why can't we? That's why.
Yes, we keep it.
Yes.
And like it's not there.
Yep, sorry.
Nope, thank you for pointing that out. Lastly, as part of the memo, the conclusion recommendations. The county's independent auditors, SB and Company LLC, will formally present the results of the audit for fiscal year 2022 today, March fourteen, twenty twenty-three, and no further action is required. So alternative to Chris.
All right. Well, thanks, Sharon, and good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
So what I'll do is I have a brief presentation, a walkthrough here, that highlights the results of the audit. If you have any questions, just feel free to jump in or hold those to the end. Either way, it's perfectly fine. Here on slide six, I have a slide of the services that the county has engaged us to perform. The county has engaged us to perform the audit of the June thirty, twenty twenty-two financial statements. And another term for that document is the ACFOR, or the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. That goes above and beyond the minimum reporting requirements for a local government, and that report gets submitted annually to the Government Finance Officers Association Award Program, or GFOA. And that historically has been an award that's been received by the county. That's also expected to continue. In addition, we've, we're at the tail end of doing our single audit work, but that's a federal compliance audit of any entity that expends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year of federal funds. And with ARPA and ERAP and various programs, the amount of federal funding has really increased, not only here in the county significantly, but really across the whole state and really across the whole country. But with most of our clients kind of centralized here in Maryland, we've seen a significant amount of federal funding increase over the past couple of years especially. In addition, there's some other, I'll call them supplemental reports, and these could either be separate legal entities or additional requirements that the state of Maryland has for additional audits. But the Calvert Marine Museum is also fall under the scope of our financial statement audit. That's a separate audit that we do, but those financials are also included within the government as a whole. And in addition, because that's set up as a not-for-profit, there's a nine ninety federal form that we also prepare. Then there's also the Soil Conservation District that gets a separately issued report. The nine-one-one fund also gets a separately issued report. And then upon the county completing its annual financial statements and submitting that to the state, there's also what's termed a Uniform Financial Report, or UFR, that's required to be submitted to the state in conjunction with the annual financial statements. That's also been completed. And then lastly, once the single audit or the federal grant compliance audit is completed, we will also complete a data collection form that goes to the federal government, and that tells the federal government that you've met your compliance requirements for the single audit. And that'll be submitted upon completion of the single audit, and that's expected to be completed on time. Questions so far? That's what probably takes the most to say, just.
You didn't audit the bank in California, did you?
No.
Just checking.
Here's a high-level summary of the results. We've issued a clean, or as Sharon mentioned, an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. And that's the best opinion we could give under our professional standards. We did not discover any instances of fraud in our audit. A financial statement audit's not a fraud audit, but we have to have a healthy skepticism that fraud could be perpetrated by anyone at any time. We did not discover any material weaknesses in the internal controls, and I have a couple of slides coming up that highlight the significant control areas that we considered. We also received the full cooperation from management. To date, we have no single audit findings from the compliance audit, and again, that's still in process, but we're nearing the end of that, and at this point, there's no reportable findings that we'd have to include. We also had no audit entries posted to the financial statement, so that just speaks to the quality of the ledger and the accounting system, and that it's not like it takes the audit to come in and clean up the balances that are reported ultimately in the financial statements. Just at a high level, the overall, on an entity-wide basis, there is a positive change in net position of a positive sixty-two million dollars. This includes not only the governmental activities, but the business-type activities. So it's really all in, if you look at the government as a whole. And I do have one slide that'll kind of walk through the general, just highlighting the general fund budgetary highlights here in a couple of slides. This slide here shows a picture of our risk-based audit approach, and the next couple of slides will walk through where we spend our time assessing the design and the operation of the internal controls, which is that second kind of segment there in the audit process. And when we consider the controls, we also consider what's the environment that the entity operates in. There's five interrelated components that we look at. That's the control environment, management's risk assessment process, information and communication, control activities, and the monitoring of those controls. And we concluded that there is an effective environment for the period under audit. And then looking at the key processes to the left there, and the assessment for green means good, but that means it was effective. But looking at treasury estimates, the financial reporting process, the expenditure cycle that encompasses the entire disbursement function. Looking at payroll, the revenue process and fixed asset accounting, we concluded that both the design and the operation of those controls were effective for the period under audit. I'm sure this slide is very easy to read, but this is just highlighting the, and this is included within the financial statements as well, but this is just a summary of the budget, the general fund budget to actual for the end of the year. Just some highlights here, but total revenue came in at just over three hundred and fifty-three million dollars on an actual budgetary basis. That's compared to a final budget of three hundred and thirty-one million, so revenues came in over budget. We've seen really across the state, property taxes, revenue has been healthy. Local income tax that's coming down from the state has even come in significantly over budget.
That's my question is income tax. I know, he knows, that's my hot button is income tax. What do you see in forecast? I mean, because how far, so to get relevant, how far back is that data? Where does that data stop? Because you didn't get it yesterday, right? So how far back?
Well, that data would have been through June thirtieth. Well, it would go through June thirtieth, but then also what we have to consider is the receipts that come in in July and August, because there's an availability criteria that plays into that. And what makes it difficult, especially at the, at the, well, probably difficult at the state level, but predicting what those, what those income taxes are going to be. I think a lot of counties and jurisdictions across the state were very pleasantly surprised for the most part, but surprised that how, how much those income taxes came in. Forward-looking, I can't speak to what that's going to look like for next year.
But remember, that's artificial, because remember, that was federally and state incentivized. But the early predictions were, could have been twenty-five to thirty percent less, you know, because there was no seeing what the state or federal government was going to do. So I'm just, I'm just waiting for what that first real number is, you know. Other businesses is easy to cycle, because you know you're past COVID monies.
Right.
So now you're getting to actually see whatever today's world is, those numbers. So you said that finished on June thirty?
Well, the numbers reported here would be through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
So when would be the next batch you would see? When would that come in?
So we have received, you know, our payments from state. We had, we received a large, one of our large distributions at the end of February, and it came in over budget.
How, I'm sorry.
The supporting documentation does go back and tell us what years and what returns those covered, and I can provide that information to you.
Please.
And then on Friday, this coming up Friday, I do have a meeting scheduled, and it's going to go over the state income tax and adjustments that they're making. So I will provide backup documentation regarding the outcome of that meeting. And again, what, how the outcome of that meeting will dictate, again, or change possibly for the commissioner's budget.
Because pre-COVID, I want to say the number was ninety-seven. Is that right?
I think it was in the low one hundreds, but you know.
If you could check that, because I don't, I thought, I'm almost positive, I remember us not breaking that, and I remember that sticking in my head. And, because I remember saying to myself, wow, if we take a twenty-five, thirty percent hit, just do an easy math, it was almost like a twenty-five to thirty million dollar hit. So I don't remember us breaking a hundred. And then I remember when those first numbers came back at COVID, everybody was surprised it broke that. So I'm curious what the number is now, pre-COVID, because that's the true baseline. Even though, I mean, income, I mean, excuse me, minimum wage has gone up significantly, but we've also seen the addition of kiosks and all the other cut stuff. So with all that wash, I'm just really worried till we get that real number.
Sure. I'll go, I will provide you a schedule of what we've collected in income tax, you know, five, seven.
If you've got, you say that's what, I'm sorry, June through February? I'm sorry, what was that?
So when we received our last distribution, the end of February, we do receive supplemental reports from the state that tells us which year they're paying those distributions on. So I can provide that documentation to board.
I think that's a barometer going forward.
Correct. And I think after the meeting on Friday, I hope to have additional information to provide you all on possibly changing what we have in the staff recommended budget for the commissioner's budget and what the state is seeing.
Please, yes.
So I will definitely keep the board abreast of that.
I know it's a little eleventh hour, but you can't, you know, it's something that we've never seen before. So when you get that data, give a little bit better perspective of, because, you know, once you, once you start approving stuff, then some of that is recurring, some of that's fifteen years. So.
Right. And income tax is one of our largest revenue sources on, for the general fund.
Property tax is a little more predictable. We all know it's going down in increments, but it's cycling every three years. So, and I could always get lost, I was asking, I think we're on District Three right now.
Correct, for real estate taxes.
So one will be pretty predictable. Two will probably start seeing, and by the time it gets to three, might be kind of where we are. But that's, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just when it hits my brain right there, and I know it's next Tuesday, so.
Yep.
But, but history has shown that this area is pretty steady because of the government influence. We don't see high peaks and lows related to property or income tax. Have we in the past?
So when we go back and we look at what was considered the housing bubble, we know nationwide that many states, counties saw huge impacts pretty much immediately from the housing bubble. Ours was more over a period of time, so it was more easily manageable to leveling out. So I, one of the theories is, is because we do have so many federal agencies around us that we are able to hold jobs and hold the value of our real estate.
Yeah, I'm not worried on the property tax as much as I am income tax.
But this board's always acted very conservatively, and if you look at the surpluses, even if there's a downturn, you know, it's just going to impact the surpluses. It's not like the budget's going to crash. I don't want anybody out there to think that.
No, no, I just want to make sure that we, that we're above COVID numbers. No, no, I just want to make sure that we, that we're above COVID numbers, but that we're not, you know, you, you, you know where I'm going because those numbers just were not real. You know, I mean, we, we were, I want to say 18% more or something like that, something absurd that just doesn't happen. So I just want to make sure that.
We're prepared.
Yes, yes.
And again, income tax is a, again, is a very hard number to budget to, but I feel, at least based on the information that I have right now in the, in for the staff recommended budget, it's a conservative number.
Good.
Now, what comes out from the state on Friday? What they see as a forecast going forward? We will see and we will make adjustments from there.
So we have strayed way off of audit and gotten to a bunch of discussions. So if I can reel Commissioner Hart back in and we can continue this discussion next week, we have gotten way off of audit. So we should get back to audit.
I almost forgot I was presenting.
No doubt. You and I could have gone.
No, 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 no worries. It was, it was good conversation. So, um, so from a budgetary basis, revenue came in over budget. On an expenditure basis, expenditures came in under budget from a budgetary to actual basis. So $303 million of actual expenditures against $305 million. Once you factor in that and then some of the transfers out for the general fund, making, uh, uh, transfers to other funds within the county, that led to a positive change in fund balance of just under $25 million on a budgetary basis.
So earlier you said we were surprised, most people were surprised. I think we were shocked by what happened during COVID to our budget cycle. Cause everyone was scared to death.
Yep.
But at the end of the day, we had surpluses the last three years like we've never seen. And now a lot of that was inflated because of federal monies coming in.
COVID money and then giving out a thousand dollars a week.
It's not the individuals, it's us. The money that we received, that we've used, that we've used. Exactly, that's gone away, but we're just talking about the last three years. And the impact that COVID had on us was shocking, not surprising. But that's going away.
Yeah, I never dreamed that, those large checks to such a small jurisdiction like us. I was, yeah, I was very surprised.
Okay, the last few slides, and I won't read through each one of these points, but if we had, if we had difficulties getting through the audit, or if there are barely acceptable accounting policies and a number, a number of the items I hit at the beginning where we didn't uncover any fraud, we didn't have any audit adjustments or any material weaknesses in the internal controls. We had no disagreements with management on anything or, or any, any unsupported transactions that we had requested backup for that we weren't able to obtain. So really nothing negative that I need to bring to your attention through the audit process. With that, I just, I have my contact information here in the back as well. If there's any questions outside of, outside of audit season, I make myself available as well.
Thank you.
Which is a testament to the great staff that we have.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Sharon.
Yes, thank you, Sharon, for all you do. Sharon and her team.
And my, exactly, my team, yes.
Although the numbers look good, it's been just getting more difficult with all the compliance requirements that come out with federal funding. It doesn't get easier to track the money and comply with requirements. And new pronouncements come out that have to be implemented into the financial statements. So it's only getting more complex, really, so.
Yes.
Well, we, along with the citizens, are very happy to hear that you didn't find any fraud and that all our practices are properly being accounted for. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
That brings us to a work session, County Administrator Anne Marie Gardens. Can you buy yourself?
I am, sir. It could be dangerous. He's got a lot of support in the back.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mark Willis, County Administrator. I do have in the back, folks, that are in support of this, uh, this work effort on Anne Marie Gardens itself. I've got Stacy Hanruff, who currently is the, basically the curator, but the director of the Anne Marie Gardens. If Stacy would like to come to the, the mic? And invite, or, or.
I mean, you can introduce whoever you have with you from the garden.
Good morning. Thanks for the chance to introduce our folks. We have a couple of our board members, Lee Woodfin, Panty, Greg Kernan, Carrie DeSantis. And you met, you met Maria a little earlier. Thank you for entertaining this and having these conversations with us. We're looking forward to continuing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come up and have a seat. We might have questions. Yeah, we might have questions.
He looks lonely.
Yeah.
This is not the proverbial hot seat.
It may be a trick.
It is.
This isn't like when the seat goes.
It goes up.
It goes up.
Again, Commissioners, this is a work session to, to really introduce the Commissioners and, and the public to something that was, that I was brought to my attention a couple of years ago. And I've been taking a look at it with Linda Vasallo, who's really done the, the work behind the scenes for me, working with Stacy and her crew. I also have in the audience Jeff Murray from the Marine Museum. And the reason he's here is as we go through this process, you'll see that what we're looking at, what we're asking for is going to be similar to what we did, the Board of County Commissioners did with the Marine Museum, you know, decades ago, so.
Before you get too far, Commissioner Pat Bueller, who has been, he's not here with us. He sent me a text. I, I want to recognize Pat. Pat sent me a text last night. He's a little under the weather and could not be with us in person today, but he told me he will, he is watching. Commissioner Bueller was instrumental in getting the Anne Marie Gardens established and has been involved in this process from the very beginning. Just want to make sure people understand that he's not with us today for other reasons, but otherwise he would be here.
And as a way to set this up, and I'm, the memo describes it, but the, the presentation was developed from the memo. So I'll, I'll forego the memo and, and jump into the presentation here in just a second. But, you know, we met with, to set this up, for example, we met with Stacy a long time ago. We talked about it. I've, I've been down to Anne Marie Gardens so many times, I can't count the number of times, so very familiar with it. But we also met with Pat Bueller, for example. I mean, we got insight on what the thought was from the board, what the thought was from some of the public around there. And we believe that this is something that the board should consider. And then in the end, I'm going to be asking for guidance to move forward. But to walk through this presentation quickly for the board and for our public, I'll do so right now. So Anne Marie Gardens actually approached, via Stacy approached us for consideration of this. So this is really an effort that we have on, at their request, but then to take a deep dive into it and see, one, that it makes sense for Anne Marie Gardens, but also that it makes sense for, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, to our public so that we maintain, we help maintain Anne Marie Gardens many years into the future. That's why we're sitting here. So the considerations that we need to look at, you know, what do we, how do we want to incorporate them into the county government? So currently, I would say that for the Marine Museum, they report directly to me. Anne Marie Gardens could be considered the same way. So as we develop this, that would be a question that we would want answered. So would they report directly to the County Administrator for oversight? Would there be a new department of the Arts and Museums? And that is just a title that we put down. It doesn't mean it has to be called that, but just to give an idea is, you know, Arts and Museums oversee Anne Marie Gardens, the Calvert Marine Museum, and the Rail Museum as a total. So that's what, that's another option that we can look at. And then a third option would be to incorporate Anne Marie Gardens into an existing county government agency. And I am in error because I would like to also send, because this slide doesn't fully describe it. I would like the Anne Marie, Anne Marie Gardens and the Marine Museum to go jointly. I don't want one reporting to me and one reporting to someone else. If, if it's your decision that they report to me, then they'll all report to me. If it's not, there'll be a department, or they will fall under a department. That's what my request is. And whoever's changing my slides for me, I appreciate it. So the positive impacts, you know, Anne Marie Gardens, they, again, they, they did approach us and we appreciate the fact that they did so. We already have a very strong relationship with Anne Marie Gardens. Even before I was in this position, you know, I worked with Stacy privately. I know Tom Jones is sitting back there. Whenever we could help Stacy on a private endeavor, we did that as well. But certainly even at the county level, we've continued to support Anne Marie Gardens above and beyond a funding that they get in the outside agency category. But, so the, the relationships there, we've shared services, we've, uh, we have, we can create, the, the pros is we can create budget efficiencies, I think, as we go forward. They would become a department, so they'll run their budget exactly like every other department or division or sub-agency does within county government. Anne Marie Gardens receives currently the largest Board of County Commissioner outside agency budget contribution. Last year was about 366,000. It would have gone up slightly to, I think, 168 this, for next year's budget. However, if you look in the budget, you will see a placeholder, and it's a placeholder only. And I had put $1 million in there. So when you consider that when we, if I am directed to take over Anne Marie Gardens as a department, I would also, we would determine who their full-time staff would be, who their temporary or part-time staff would be, what their operational budget would be, et cetera. They would be set up exactly like any other department. And the best example, if citizens would like to look at that, they could go into the budget and look at the Marine Museum. And there's really three components to this when you look, you don't see all of that in the, in the budget, but there's outside agencies that work here as well. You have the foundation arm, which is the Koenig Foundation. And really their, their, their agreement or their desire to contribute the way that they did really came to an end a few years ago. And while they do still contribute funding, they're not required to. And while the county has been very generous, I believe, to Anne Marie Gardens, I think it's, everybody agrees that it'll take a little bit more funding to make sure that they're solvent and that they're able to conduct their mission the way that they would like to, the way the citizens enjoy it, and the way that the Board of County Commissioners would like to see it executed. So that million dollars as a placeholder, we would work towards creating their budget within the bud, within the budget book as we go forward. And you'll, a little bit more about that as we go forward. So the potential negative impacts, I think we could always say that there's always something negative, but we haven't found any. And I'm not going to make something up. Anne Marie Gardens has, they've always been able to conduct their mission with the funding that we've provided, with the funding that they've raised through Ann Circle, which is their fundraising arm, and with the, the help from the Koenig Foundation. We are not really looking at all to change that process. What we're looking to do is to incorporate an administrative financial process and over, uh, staffing oversight process that brings them completely and jointly into the county government. They would be treated no differently than anybody else, no special privileges, no, no less privileges, just like everybody else. So no negativity there, as far as I'm concerned. The assumptions, Anne Marie Gardens budget coincides with, you know, staff's fiscal analysis. You know, the, the analysis includes an incorporation of shared resources such as, you know, human resources, technology services, public works, communications, media relations. Those are all items that are currently conducted internal to Anne Marie Gardens now. They couldn't survive if they weren't being accounted for. The assumptions are that when they become a, if they become a county agency, that we will be able to, you know, share staff that we already have and make it even more efficient, both financially and just administratively efficient. So the fiscal year 24 Anne Marie Gardens, as I mentioned, currently, and I said, in, in this slide, you'll see 500,000 to a million, even though in the outside agency portion of the budget, they get a certain amount, which is roughly $360,000. There are other areas in which we tried to provide assistance. We provide custodial assistance, we provide buildings and grounds assistance when we can. And there's a cost to that, but it's a cost that we have been able to absorb over time. And that's Tom Jones's responsibility, Deputy Director of our Buildings and Grounds Department, to make sure that we are good neighbors. So it's really a good neighbor act that we've been conducting this under. And with a transition, they would just become part of the family. So the requested action by me, you know, staff requested, staff requested the Board of County Commissioners determine whether or not to incorporate Anne Marie Gardens into the county government. Should the Board of County Commissioners desire to incorporate Anne Marie Gardens into the county government operations, staff requests authorization to include Anne Marie Gardens into the fiscal year 2024 Board of County Commissioners budget. So the budget that the citizens see out there now, that staff recommended budget that you got, received copies of, the only reference to Anne Marie Gardens in that book is as an outside agency with that monetary $1 million as a placeholder. What I'm asking is that if so approved, that we would incorporate them fully into Calvert County Government with an org chart, with a operational budget, with whatever budget is appropriate at the time, that would still have to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners in late May. So you'll have multiple times. You could talk about it again next week, and you could talk about it again between, officially, we could talk about it out here as we go forward between the staff recommended budget and the Board of County Commissioners recommended budget. And we can certainly talk about it in May at the final public hearing. So there's another opportunity there. So staff recommends that, that we do just that, if so recommended, to incorporate them into the county government. With that, Commissioners, I have nothing further, but are subject to your questions.
So I want to give Stacy or someone from the board an opportunity to talk about why we're here today.
Just pull it close if you want.
I don't want, I don't want anyone out there watching to think that this is some kind of takeover by county government. And, you know, Mark's done a good job of talking about the history of why we're here today, but I want to make sure that you give a fair representation from your side about why we're here today. So everybody understands fully.
Well, I think it's important to understand that we've been partners for a long time, two decades, actually, when we add it up. And when I say we, I mean, the county, Ann Circle, and the Koenig Private Foundation. So this is nothing new. And I'm proud of the fact that we've actually had a very cordial and cooperative relationship and partnership. And we've accomplished an incredible amount in two decades. For those of you who've been around for a while, you've been around for a while. I mean, it's tremendous, the transformation in operations and staffing. We've turned it into something truly to be proud of. And that is a reflection of our partnership, that I think it has been so productive. So the way I see this is really renegotiating and rethinking what the partners are doing, right? And some of this did come about because there had been changes with the Koenig Private Foundation. And without going into all the details, that foundation had access to more funding. It was designed to do this, by the way, but it had a more funding access through 2019. And in 2019, that funding ended. And we've actually done a great job adjusting to that. We got a lot more aggressive, I mean, we were pretty aggressive before, but we got a lot more aggressive with grants and other funding options. We've got a terrific development director, we've got a really active Ann Circle board. And so I'm, I'm proud of what we did to adjust to all of that. And you all stepped up as well. Mark alluded to that. By, your support has been that direct grant for our payroll. You pay a lot of our utilities, electric and water and sewer. So I, I think at that 2019 point, we did some adjustments and we're grateful for that. This is what I see as another adjustment to that partnership.
Stacy, I need to interrupt you. If you briefly can, most people probably don't even know that Anne Marie wasn't part of the county system.
Yeah, I think, I think most people think we were.
Yes, so if you could briefly talk about how Anne Marie got started to give some, some context to people out there trying to figure out why we're having this discussion today. I know it's a long history and it's very detailed, but just a note, kind of brief overview of how it all started.
Uh, let me see if I can hit some of the highlights. So 1991, the property was the, and when I say the property, there's actually two properties under discussion, but the one property is the county property. In 1991, Fran and Anne Marie Koenig donated that property to the people of Calvert County. And for the first 10 years or so, there was a, a county Friends of Anne Marie Garden operation. I, I wasn't here that time. From about two. that time. From about two thousand and two forward, the county property, Amory Garden, as we all call it, has been operated by the Koenig Private Foundation. They actually have, we have, I'm an employee, have a lease and operating agreement with the county to operate it. And the foundation, it's a nonprofit organization, and they have operated it legally ever since. In early, I think around two thousand and four or so, Ann Circle was created. And the board members you see behind me are all from Ann Circle. That organization was created because we knew we needed community input into the operation of what we were doing, programs and events. We wanted to make sure we were serving the community. So Ann Circle was created, and I think you all know, a lot of the people that serve on that board. So since then, the county, the foundation, and Ann Circle have worked together to operate the county, or the, the county. That's not our full responsibility. No, sorry.
Our job is to.
Is that an ulterior motive?
That's right. We're, we're taking over. Sorry. We've worked together to operate Amory Garden. And I think that's probably why so many people already think we're part of the county. And I work so closely, and my staff works so closely with the county, with general services and Parks and Rec. Shannon's back there, they're fabulous neighbors. Tom Jones and Bob Atkins, Danny, who was here before. I mean, I, I feel like I'm already part of the family because we work so closely. So again, going back to this idea, this has been a vibrant, productive partnership for a very long time. So it's really rethinking how we're managed. And when I look at the benefit for the garden, this is my selfish side, what I see is being part of the county can bring us some inner stability. I'm really proud of everything we've done. We are scrappy. I, I've used that word so many times to talk about us. We are creative and we are scrappy as an organization. But I think we do need a little bit more internal stability. We're not coming to you all expecting you to do everything. We want to continue to be a partner. Our Ann Circle Board is undergoing a master plan process right now, which you will learn more about because we'll want your blessing on it. But they are engaged. They want to be part of it. They, we have a vibrant membership program. We have a vibrant volunteer program. So we're really coming to you looking for a partnership. And some, some of that internal stability, a little bit more help taking care, our, our facility is aging. It's your facility. The people of, of Calvert County own the facility. And there are some things that we need help with in taking care of it. But we want to continue to do all the programs that we do. Do you know fiscal year twenty-two, we almost hit a hundred thousand visitors? A hundred thousand? That's pretty amazing. When you look at the rest of, you know, who, who our good company is, we're doing our part to serve our community, to bring tourists to our region. Don't, we, we love tourists. We want them to come down and spend all their money in Solomons and Calvert County, and then go home and tell their friends what a great time they had. So we wear two hats in our service to our community by providing programs and services to the people that live here, and then attracting tourists to the area. So I don't know. I guess, I think it's an important part, partnership. I think it's a vibrant partnership. It's productive. We get a lot done. We serve our community. And we'd like to continue to do that for decades more. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, well, I just want.
Or more.
For those watching, understand why we're here.
Yes, yes. It is a county property. I, I think that's important to note.
And for us as a board, today, there's three issues that I see. The first and not most is, are we going to make this partnership official? We're looking for direction on that. The budget, for me, comes later, and the organization comes, you know, second to that. But today, primary, you know, as a board, they're looking for direction if we're going to undertake this.
I'll go last, because I have some thoughts.
It's okay.
If you guys want to go before me.
Well, when I first read through this, my initial reaction was because Amory Garden, Calvert Marine Museum, and the Railroad, Railway Museum are such gems within the county. Especially you all and the Marine Museum, there's a lot of creativity there. And I, I don't want to see a government involvement that would ever squash what you all have done and want to continue to do. So I had a conversation with Administrator Willis to see how this would all play out. And I think it's, it's worked for the Calvert Marine Museum, hasn't it? Yes. So that was my only concern at all. I, I want to see you all continue to flourish and that part of it for us to stay out of it. That's it.
You all do great things down there. But my question is, how do you all compare to the museum? You said a hundred thousand visitors per year. What, what is a Calvert Marine Museum per year now?
Morning Commissioners. Jeff Murray, Director of County Marine Museum. We were pre-COVID at about eighty-six, eighty-seven thousand a year. That's without concerts. So we are well over a hundred thousand with concerts.
Okay.
But we haven't quite seen pre-COVID numbers yet. We were about eighty-five percent.
All right, thank you.
So you guys are saying we've been down this road before with the Marine Museum? And there's no sense in, I guess, reinventing the wheel. We have, we have some idea of what we're looking forward to, correct, Mark?
Yes, sir.
I, I mean, I agree with Buddy that I was looking at numbers. And do you have a breakdown of Halloween Garden, Garden and Lights, Arts Fest, as to what the income there is? I would like to see that moving forward. I, again, I've, I've visited. I mean, it's a beautiful facility, without a doubt. The Wardman's Memorial that's there, I like that. I think it has a lot of potential. I really do.
So you mentioned two thousand and nineteen. If you remember our discussion, Stacy's face was just like stone because we knew what was happening. We knew the funding was drying up, and we were in very uncertain times. But we knew how special Amory Gardens was. So, you know, our conversation was, I can't promise you anything. I mean, we were bleeding money, and there was a lot of turmoil. And so, you know, the team that was assembled, on your point, was incredible, and still is incredible. The professionals that you have at Ann Circle were so blessed. To find these folks and to have the time and dedication, it's really remarkable how little you've needed us. I mean, especially with COVID and everything, it could have really been bad because people were not allowed to go into facilities. And there was nothing you could do about that. And so I remember that conversation, and I remember walking out of there going, boy, I really hope you're successful because I don't know what to do if you're not. So I think what you guys have done has proven that you have a successful model. You know, it's kind of like, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. You know, I think you're doing really well. So I think where we can come into place is to be that stability, you know? I don't think we need to tell you how to run it. I do believe on the short term, that we should become partners with you guys, have you join the family, so to speak, and go into Director Willis on the short term as a liaison, because I do think in the future, I could see a department of like museums, you know, of somebody that, you know, it's what you do, and understanding your customer base and understanding future things. I think what Jeff's done at the, at the Marine Museum's been, been incredible. I mean, both places, they're staples. I mean, I remember, you've heard me say many times, I've been going to that Marine Museum since I can remember. I mean, my earliest memories. And, you know, Amory Gardens is, is, is part of Calvert. That's, I mean, there is a whole generation of little ones that their Halloween is going there. If you don't walk those lights in Christmas, I see it every year, you're missing out. I mean, you really are. I mean, it is a family place. It is, you know, like we talked about in Parks and Recs, you know, it has something from the cradle to the grave. And Amory Gardens is the same way, you know, as is the museum, to just walk it just for peace of mind. You know, it's so tranquil walking through there. If you're looking for emotion today.
This is a work session. We don't have any emotions. We're just looking for direction.
Okay. I mean, obviously, my, my twenty percent is that we should be there as a stabilizing factor. And I think what you're doing is fantastic. So I would just like to come from the part of, what can we do to help? You know? Yes, sir?
Mike, I'm Lee Whitson.
You have to get to the mic.
Okay, up to the mic, up to the, so Mike, you know, Amory Gardens is thirty years old, and I happen to know you're considerably older than that. Anyways, I think that, you know, the talk that we've had about stability, right? So I think that in a collaborative way, we've built a solid, you know, a foundation, right? And I think now we would ask the county to help us solidify that foundation. Because when I think about what Amory Garden should be ten years from now, twenty years from now, thirty years from now, we need a more solid foundation. And we have some pretty lofty plans that I, and it's not Christmas yet, so we're not going to tell you about that. But maybe we'll have a Christmas in July where we can do that. But I do think that, at least as the President, I think one of my strongest, biggest responsibilities is to make sure that that place is here fifty years from now, and a hundred years from now. So we're asking you guys to give us stability to build on and to do that.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, so I think we have consensus from the board that we're going to move forward with the formalizing the partnership that we have. And I view this similar to the same partnership we have with Jeff at the Marine Museum. You know, as was said, our goal here is to try to stay out of your way. But when you become part of the government family, you know how families are.
There's always an uncle somewhere.
Yeah, it ain't gonna be Christmas every day, but.
There's more positives than negatives.
As you've heard, you know, the board supports the mission. You know, when I was, when we first talked about this, I said, well, there's no way we're going to let Anne Marie fail. There's no way. So today, we're just starting that path to formalize and make you all stable. But just to warn you, there's going to be bumps in the road. You know, it's, we've, you know, I haven't done one of these before, and I don't know how it worked when Marine Museum started, but, you know. So we're going to start down that path. And if we're going to talk about organization, the Administrator has that on his list today. I have struggled personally with creating a whole new department to oversee three museums. That's, this is my personal opinion. You know, Jeff, I understand Jeff has conversations with staff with needs. Railway Museum is pretty quiet most of the time. And when I envision departments, you know, I keep hearing, well, we just need one person. It's never just one person if you're going to call them a department. You know, my vision has been that we create a position to oversee, since we're taking you all on, that would oversee those three units. And where we put that person, for me, is another discussion, whether we do that today or not. And I see it as tourism, and I don't want the director to fall out of her chair back there. But you all are the strongest leg we have for tourism in Calvert County. You know, when people come to Calvert County, I, I tell people, go to Anne Marie, go to Marine Museum. You know, if you're visiting Calvert County, we have a lot of wonderful attributes, but those are the two. I tell people, go see. So we're going to have to figure out how we formulate oversight. And the budget number is what the budget number is. For me, I don't need to figure that out today, but just throwing my twenty percent or my twenty cents into this discussion, I'm not very supportive of creating a whole new department to oversee.
You bring a good point. Do you remember our discussion with the bond raiders when COVID hit and obviously devastated the hotel industry? And their conversation, to me and Commissioner Hans, where they're like, well, we don't understand. You, you lowered your tax rate when everybody else is jumping out of windows and stuff. They're like, all that tourism from all the hotels. And we're like, we don't have hotels. We have like Amory Gardens and, and the museum and, you know, and beaches and stuff. I mean, that, that is our tourism. And they really couldn't wrap, because I think she was from New Jersey, I believe, or something where there's so many hotels and, and, and things like that. And so Commissioner Hans is right, you know, that is our tourism. That is.
I'm leaning in the same direction as Commissioner Hans.
Commissioners, truly, what I need is the first part that you've already, you've obtained consensus on it. Deciding how we're going to incorporate them is, truly, I just need to have that answer before we create your final budget recommended to the citizens. So we have some time to, to decide that.
How many employees do you have down there?
Full-time equivalent, sixteen.
Sixteen.
I, actually, could I add something? I think you all are coming for a visit on April twenty-fifth. There's a tour scheduled. That, that might be a good time to do a short presentation on our, I think, I may be getting the date wrong, but there's a tour in the works. That might be a good opportunity to, to do a little presentation for all of you on our budgeting and our current funding.
Because Mike and I have been down that path. These three new Commissioners don't have the background that we have.
We can give the short version, since you.
But I hope Jeff would agree. We try to stay out of his way. But as has been mentioned over the past few years, our participation has been increasing. And, you know, so we need to, we need to formalize how we're going to move forward. We don't want you all to be concerned about the doors being open. That's not going to happen, so.
And the roof leaking, things like that.
Well, that's Tom Jones's problem.
Tom.
He won't, he won't let that happen.
He'll find money somewhere. But.
So, did you get your direction as?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
All right. So we're going to, we're going to cut a ribbon or something like that, or have cake or?
We will come up with something. We'll let Stacy come up with a grand reopening. I do want to thank all the members of Ann Circle and everybody involved with that because, you know, they're extremely dedicated. They are there constantly making sure that this is the facility that it is. So, so I want to say thank you to everybody.
And we definitely want to keep you.
Yeah.
Yes.
So what I've learned out of this is that when Commissioner Hart invites me down to speak with him at his Southern office, I never know what I'm going to get tasked. So this is a whole new department or a whole new division. So it's not just a permit.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thanks. Thank you.
Counselor, that brings us to public comment.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to provide public comment? Thanks, sir. Please make your way up to the microphone. The board adopted a resolution in nineteen eighty-nine intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. Copy is found here to my right. The Ethics Commission has asked us that we remind speakers at public comment that lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy and must register in advance. Floor has been open for public comment. If you're speaking as an individual, you'll be allocated two minutes. Representative of a group will be allocated five.
My name is Bob Estes. I'm representing Friends of Hunting Creek. And I think now Commissioner Hans knows that there's more than just me. It's a friend of Hunting Creek because he saw a couple others at the ACLT meeting. But, and by the way, Happy Pie Day, three point one four. And if you want to know when to celebrate, the next two numbers are one, five, which is fifteen hundred. And I think at least one of us knows what that is.
I was going to say, Bob, how come I know you'd know that?
Well, because.
You got to know something. So you might not believe it, but I actually came here
to listen to the audit presentation. And I'm not lying, because I haven't heard one before. And I think it's important to understand that. Well, all I know now is that it exists. The understanding, that'll come with time, maybe. But anyway, I'm also happy to hear that county is re-engaging in non-title water monitoring. That's, that's an important, that's an important set of data that'll help us to make decisions based on not just what we see, which is things like traffic, but, but on hard, hard facts. And that's, that's an important foundation for all of us. Now, April first, I think some of you all are aware, we have what's called a water blitz, started first by ACLT, but there's now three other groups that are participating. Mine. Mine in particular, we're doing, we're testing for chemistry 22 sites. And some of these sites are waiter and booth type sites to get to. So that's my job, by the way. And we're testing for nitrogen, we're testing for phosphorus, and the members are all paying for this out of their own pocket. We're testing four sites for macroinvertebrates, which are the bugs in the mud. But we're also doing something new, which is the, they call it eDNA. But basically, we're testing the water for DNA to see who's swimming about in there. So one thing, we scoop up sediment. This other is a brand new test that'll tell us that health. And they're kind of like canaries in a coal mine. So, you know, if the bugs are happy, you've probably got something good happening. And those two tests together are expensive, and they're also being paid for by, by members of Friends of Hunting Creek. So I'm looking forward to partnering with the county's efforts on these non-tidal waters. I think they won't be able to test as many places, but they'll, they'll have superior instrumentation. We'll have some of that same instrumentation as well, and I think it's going to be a great partnership. And by the way, one of our sites is going to be tested by school kids. So that's, that's a new, new one for us. So get that next generation rubbed up and ready to protect the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. President, there's no one online.
Really? Surprised. So that brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Cox.
Just condolences for the Douglas D. O. Bowen family. And just to reiterate, he was just recognized for over 45 years of being on a committee for Ducks Unlimited.
Thank you. Commissioner Arlen?
March 8th, I attended the Calvert Strategic Roadway Safety Meeting. Debbie Jennings and representatives from throughout county government, as well as outside partners, are formulating plans to keep Calvert's roadway safe. I worked with Debbie for many, many years through the Calvert County Traffic Safety Council. She's a, she's a wonderful person, and like I said, she's spearheading it now in hopes it'll be turned over to, to another committee that, that'll actually be running. On March 9th, Calvert Commission for Women recognized several individuals at the Calvert Gallery in Prince Frederick. It was very well attended. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Grasso?
On Saturday, I attended the 20th Annual Women of the World Celebration Awards. It was a Zoom meeting. It was really, really done well. I was shocked when the awards had been given and then we were allowed to go into different chat rooms and congratulate or talk to award recipients. I was able to do it, and that's a miracle because I am not a computer person at all. I thought I'd mess it up, but I didn't. That evening, I attended the Calvert Library Foundation Award Dinner, and our honorees were Michael Kent and Patricia Hoffman, and it was a very nice event. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Hart?
Nothing for me today, Mr. President.
All right. So on Friday, I testified on House Bill 1177, Local Preference, for trying to get, help our local businesses acquire county contracts. We are optimistic that that legislation is going to pass this year and we can make some changes to help them. On Saturday, I too zoomed into WOW, and like Commissioner Grasso, I'm always amazed that I can actually do that. And unfortunately, couldn't make the Library Foundation Dinner on Saturday night, and want to congratulate Michael Kent and Pat. Her last name escapes me right now. Hoffman, who were recognized that night for their achievements. And on Saturday before that, I was at the ACLT Annual Meeting held at St. John Vienni. A wonderful organization that I think I've promoted before because they've single-handedly saved Parkers Creek and all through volunteerism and using grants and all different formats. So we can't thank them enough for what they do to protect the watershed. Also, yesterday, I had lunch with Jeremy Bradford. What's your, what's your title, Jeremy? CEO? President CEO of Calvert Health. He's, he's new on the job. He told me he just found the bathroom last week.
He's doing good, then. It only takes two weeks.
But it's been a pleasure meeting Jeremy and his wife, and he's got a great background and great outlook. And I emphasized with him yesterday how important it is for us to keep our community hospital and that we will do what we can to help him do that. It's vitally important that we have our community hospital. So we're very fortunate to have Jeremy on board middle forward. That's all I have. So Commissioner Hart?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move to recess to executive session pursuant to general provisions, Article, Section 3-303B, three, to discuss acquisition of property for a public purpose or related matters.
Second. Have motion second that we go into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Have a great day.
Thank you.